Thank you. Citizens Communications and Recognitions, any submitted?
None submitted.
Going on to Public Hearings?
We have none.
Ordinances, item number one, second reading, an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of the Castle Rock subdivision unit three legally defined as a property legally defined as a 5.29 acres of land in Maverick County, Texas, out of the Chittam Estate land out of survey one abstract 1047 and being parts of a 7.31 acres of land described in conveyance to D W Chisholm Holdings Limited, recorded in volume eight five eight pages eighteen dash ET SEQ, a 7.3 acres tract described in conveyance to D W C Creative Home LLC, recorded in volume seven nine six, page three seven seven dash ET SEQ, and a 6.1511 acre tract described in conveyance to J P Austin Development LLC, recorded in volume one zero six two, page three fifty-three dash ET SEQ, all of the Maverick County official public records, Maverick County, Texas, from R one first one dwelling district to R two second one family dwelling district, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Madera?
Mayor, thank you. This is a second reading, but with Councilman Salinas on board, I wanted to give a little bit of recap just to cover what we did in the first reading. So this is a request of change of zoning district for Castle Rock subdivision unit three presented by or submitted by Dirksen Engineering on behalf of D W C Creative Holdings. And the request is to change from an R one first first one family dwelling district to R two second one family. And just for reference, the the main differences between that is the the width of the lot. On average, an R one would be seventy feet with a depth of minimum one ten. And R two, what they're requesting the rezone to is an average of fifty-five foot width with the minimum depth of a hundred, just ten foot less in depth and difference of fifteen feet on width. The recommendation from the department is to approve the rezone request with the condition that they apply with all all zoning ordinances. I want a question you asked me last time, it is a thirty unit.
Oh, the number of units?
Thirty units are in this subdivision. I'm going to make sure, make a note of that one for this time.
Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Ramon has joined us. Any questions? And the recommendation is to move forward? Motion? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilman Yelpando. Any discussion? None being, all raise your right hand if you're in favor. Unanimous. Second, item number two, second reading of an ordinance, ordinance changing the zoning district classification of property legally defined as a 5.51 acres of land, more or less situated in Maverick County, Texas, and fronting three hundred feet on the south line if of or if US Highway two seventy-seven, as located by the resident engineer of the Texas Highway Department for project number RW dash three hundred dash one dash twenty-two, and having a depth of eight hundred feet, said 5.551 acres of land being out of a out of and a part of that certain five fifty-one point two five acre tract of land out of survey eight abstract one 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 F dot Fox and J Byrne, original to grantees conveyed to Maverick County by A D Itzen by deed dated August twelve nineteen forty-six, recorded in volume thirty-eight, page five one seven, deed records of Maverick County, Texas, twenty-four forty East Main Street, from I Industrial District to B three General Business District, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Madera?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another request for a zoning classification change. This one is from being requested, it was actually initiated, Mr. Antuna, in discussions with TechStop, we're trying to kind of proactively get ahead of this. It's a property twenty-four forty East Main, which is, you know, everybody from town knows it is a TechStop property, they have plenty of equipment, you can see it from the from the lake. They may be moving out sometime in the near future, so as I said, Mr. Antuna, I was kind of proactive about talking to them to voluntarily change zoning from industrial to business, B three general, which would allow for more appropriate businesses to be put in the area and and be the only type to take over in its place after TechStop moves out and and they potentially resell the property. So this is a photo here, you can see, I'm not sure if you have it in your package, but this would be the Maverick County Lake area, Veterans and Main, so it's a this parcel right there at the intersection across from IBC Bank. The the parcel, as Mr. Mayor Sequentis mentioned, it is a five and a half acre parcel of land. And the recommendation is to approve the zoning ordinance and make that property B three general business, which would be more appropriate for the area.
Second? Motion made by Councilman Yelpando, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number three, third and final reading of an ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, finding that the current rates of Texas Natural Gas Incorporated are unreasonable, approving Texas State Natural Gas Inc.'s revised and uncontested tariffs, setting the effective date of new tariffs as for bills rendered on or after February first, twenty twenty, determining the reasonableness of Texas State Natural Gas Inc.'s rate case expenses, finding that any relief requested by Texas State Natural Gas Inc., not specifically granted herein, is defined, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and providing for notice of this ordinance to Texas State Natural Gas LTD. Who's got this item?
So this is a request submitted by Texas State Natural Gas. In their presentation, they did lay out the rationale for this increase. The it's basically tied to their operations. They did mention that they do pretty much just cost of living adjustments, I don't remember the term that they use, but basically that's what it is on a periodic basis, but they hadn't had a real adjustment to offset all of the additional improvements and the growth of the community. So their proposal is to increase those rates. They do believe on the attachment, they did specify that the rates are the the purpose of the way they set up their rates was to ensure that the residential customers did not brunt the, you know, the biggest portion of this increase. So it is geared more towards the increases to commercial development. So of course, the recommendation from the Texas State Natural Gas is to approve the changes.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Yelpando. Any discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Going on to item number four, third and final reading of an ordinance amending section five dash three two, article three, chapter five, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, to include Horizon Hill subdivision, lot one thirty-three oh one East Main Street, within the areas in which the sale of alcohol alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is permitted, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Sir, basically what this is, the Hampton Inn requesting to be able to sell alcohol.
Are they opening like something in there or what?
Yeah, a lot of these hotels now that have a little bar.
Happy hour or something?
And so they they had, they haven't been able to do it, and they want to be able to do that.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. Any questions and discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Going on to resolutions, item number five, consideration and possible approval of a resolution calling for a city officer's runoff election to be held Saturday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, establishing procedures and authorizing approving and constituting the order of said election. Would that be you, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. After consulting with legal and also the Secretary of State, we finally have established the dates for this election. As you know, we faced the blackout date issue that we had previously when we had the first city officer special election. This is according to section four one zero zero one C. No other election can be held within thirty days of a primary election, which pushed this election to be held, according to the Secretary of State, until after April the second. So the closest we could get, because we still have to due to early voting and election date, there's specific dates that we have to follow. So due to all of this, our election date will be April the the twenty-fifth. Early voting will be held from April the eighth through April the twenty-fifth. And I also consulted with the Secretary of State, and we do have to have it for ten days because this is a non-uniform election. Only in a uniform election can it be held for seven days, early voting. So our our long days will be April the fourteenth and the twentieth, and those are the days that were stated by as stated by the Secretary of State and approved, and we consulted also with legal. And for this election, I am ordering a total of four thousand ballots, which I'm confident we should have enough, because I checked our records in our previous election, when we had a runoff, we ordered five thousand, but we had two positions that were going off in that runoff election, so I feel pretty confident we should have enough with four thousand.
Five hundred more. I mean, we had over forty-three hundred this past time. I mean, I know there's no guarantee that
Yes.
that number will come up again, but
We we, I mean, we're we're here, I mean, we can do the change if.
I'd just rather have.
What is, what historically speaking, what have what has been the high number? Because the the anomaly about this past election was the number of candidates also and the number of races, which was going to obviously jump your number up.
Yes.
Well, the 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 last runoff election that we had, it was two positions. It was it was place two and place four. And it was five thousand ballots that were ordered, and only a thousand eight hundred ballots were used.
There you go.
So that that's why, but if, but if even if we were to need more ballots, I would still have ample time between early voting and election day to order. I would have an, and that way, you know, I don't have any any leftovers. If you feel comfortable, I can add the five hundred, but I would have ample time to order extra ballots if if they were to be needed.
Right.
So ordering extra is not definitely not necessary?
No, I I would have ample time between, because I've I've done it, and I know they can send them, we we were, our supplier is very good.
What's what's the expense of these ballots?
If, I'm going to say between three to four thousand.
Don't order.
That's why, that's why I'm 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 going with that amount, because I I'm, and then that's how, that's what the Secretary of State, you you base yourself on previous outcomes of elections, not by population.
Be as conservative as possible.
Yes, and and that's why I say I will have ample time to order, so reassure yours, be be sure that I will give myself enough time. Yes, and I I'll have enough time to order.
Motion made by Councilwoman Yelpando, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon.
No, there's just one title, but I can tell you off the, I mean, I can, I can show it to you when we're done, it doesn't make any difference to the the body, I just, I'll let you know.
Okay.
It's nothing that's going to, I'd rather not say it.
The selection, then it's going to be occurring during the Easter holidays?
Yes, yes, it will. There will be two holidays, which is Good Friday and Easter Monday. Those are city holidays, but they are not by the Secretary of State, they are not recognized federal holidays, they only recognize federal holidays. So we will, early, the early voting polls will remain open.
On that Friday and the Monday?
And that Easter Monday, yes.
Okay, and it'll be just through the week, Monday through Friday, right?
Yeah, Monday through Friday. That is correct.
Any other discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number six, consideration and possible of approval of a resolution authorizing the use of competitive sealed proposals for IT services. And I believe, Jesse, you had some legal issues that we had to cover on this one?
Yes.
So we are amenable, we'll take this to executive session?
You need a motion to that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to take this to executive session.
Motion to table the item for executive session by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, seconded by Councilman Yelpando. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion moved to executive session. Number seven, consideration and possible approval of a resolution authorizing the use of competitive sealed proposals for swimming pool maintenance services?
Mayor, Council, chapter two fifty-two of the local government code requires that we come before the council with a resolution anytime we want to go out for bids, when we're taking other items other than price into consideration. So for certain services, it's really essential that we do that, because you don't necessarily want to go with the cheapest, you want to go with the qualifications, references, other items, it's just not strictly price. So for this service, for swimming pool maintenance service, that's what we're requesting, that authority to take price into consideration, of course, but also their qualifications, references, the timeline that's going to take them to do the work, those items. There is no commitment to choose any firm that bids, it just allows us to gather the pricing. Ultimately, we come back to the council, and then the council decides if they want award to one or just reject all of the bid.
Or choose that.
Yeah.
Who does it now? Who has it?
Right now, what, so last year, the city chose to outsource park maintenance, the park maintenance staff, some of the park maintenance staff did that in-house before. So right now, the answer is nobody is assigned to that.
But prior to that, our our own employees have been taking care of it for years, for many, many years, same employees, so.
So what we want to do is be able to evaluate the price, you know, how much would it cost for a company to come in here versus to have our staff do it?
Now, when we send out the RFP, what specifically are we going to be asking for them to bid on?
So they need to evaluate the site, and they need to propose to us what they feel is necessary for the site, because that that really relies on their expertise. If the pool that size, you know, it depends on the chemicals that they decide to use. So some chemicals may be every week, some may be every two weeks. So they need to provide that information to us, saying, this is what I'm going to use, this is how often I'm going to do it, this is how much I'm going to charge. And then it's up to us to determine what's in the best interest of the city.
Jesse, and just, just for, so that we won't be surprised or overcharged, you know? I mean, I, in my opinion, it had been done like that for years, you know? I don't have a problem outsourcing if it's what's best for the city. So I do want you, or I'm asking, you know, that that when you are considering all this, please consider the fact that, you know, we don't have anybody in Eagle Pass to take care of that, we are going to have to, and that's just going to be the case, you know, that we're going to have to outsource it from out of town, and you know how that goes. I mean, they start charging you from the minute they drive out, you know? And in my opinion, if we never had issues with that before, then, you know, I just need you to be, or would like for you to be very careful when you're doing this, you know, because we don't want to spend anything that we don't have to spend.
Yeah, of course.
Especially if they have been working out for us the way it was before. I mean, just because one employee was doing it, doesn't mean that nobody else can do it. And if that's the way it was working out, then then, you know, just be very careful with that, because because a company comes from out of town and and, you know, they're going to, that's going to be what it's going to be, and I think you know that, you know? If anybody knows that, it's you, you know?
Yeah, so our plan is to come back once we get all those numbers and show the side-by-side comparison, this is what it would cost in-house when the company hits YZ, you know, just to show you that comparison, and ultimately, the council makes that decision.
Yeah, RFP, the RFP doesn't mean we're going to go with it, I mean, we're going to evaluate it just like we did with the help we got with the Christmas lighting, and if it stays within budget and it can be done, you know, that's something to consider, but nothing is guaranteed. Now, I'm going to go back to my question. What are they going to be responsible for? Is it only the swimming pool or the entire facility?
No, like the groundskeeping, that's separate from the park, this is strictly just the swimming pool itself, whether if it's the patching on the plastering or if it's the chemicals, all of that relates strictly to the swimming pool. There's other staff that's assigned to the actual maintenance of the building and of the landscaping.
So those people that we have there are still assigned there to the landscaping and and the building and all the facility?
Yes. Yeah, because there are two different timetables on on the landscaping and on the chemicals, you know, it really just depends. But ultimately, you know, all the goal of this is just to get the pricing, to see what what's in the city's best interest.
I I kind of feel the way Ms. Ramon feels right now, it's, I don't know, we're just going to be looking for swimming pool maintenance, and we've been doing it in-house all along.
Has there been an issue with the people that do it in-house, like?
Other than they were moved to a different department.
Yeah, that's the issue now, that the personnel isn't there anymore.
They're still within the city.
They're still in the city.
The pool person moved somewhere else.
Well, he's within the city, but at another department.
He used to be in Parks and Recs, now they're in the public works.
So it would be an additional cost if we did have the in-house personnel? So just to evaluate that, how much would that additional cost for having the in-house personnel?
I have another factor to consider, you know, as you're going out for the this proposal, I know you're going out for what's existing, and it's still currently under the regular chlorinated system. Have we ever considered like what it would cost if we were to retrofit it and go into the salt water treatment? Because I think it's supposed to be less expensive maintenance-wise and stuff, but I don't know if it's something that we can request some information on. I mean, if we're going to make changes, and it might make a better improvement, it might be a little bit expensive at the beginning, but it might save us long-term.
And consultants, when they apply for these, we show on the sites, and they they definitely recommend initiatives like that.
I just wanted us to make sure that we're
We're going to leave it open to have them to also give us suggestions as to what we need to be doing.
I mean, for for that reason, that Mayor Pro Tem Davis mentioned, I can see us entertaining a proposal, there's no commitment, and at the end of the day, I but I feel like Ms. Ramon, I don't think it's going to be a savings when you got to hire somebody else to do the work, and our guys have been able to do it all along. But to entertain an, maybe if it's something like that
Well, because there's local pool companies that can, they might be bidding, you never know.
So if anybody's interested in
I'll make a motion to consider it.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. Any other discussion? None being, raise your right hand, if you're in favor. Unanimous. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of a resolution designating the authorized city representatives for purposes of conducting and authorizing banking transactions, as defined herein, I take it that's yours also, Jess?
Yes. So now that we have a new mayor, traditionally, the mayor is a signer on all the city's bank accounts. As a control, the city has a two-signer requirement. The the two other individuals are myself and Miss Imelda. So on all of the checks, the mayor's signature comes out on them, along with Miss Imelda's. Usually, my signature is just there for internal banking transactions. It's always, since I'm really seeing all the transactions for control, I tend to not be involved in that, it's the signatures of both of you that really will matter. And so this is just the formality of naming the the new mayor as the signer on the accounts. There is another item that I do need to inform the the council of, in that with the the approval of the golf course management company, there is an account that will need to be opened under the joint name of the city and this golf course management company. The accounting will be the responsibility of the city, but because of internal management issues, they also need to be able to view what's going in, what's coming out, in order to prepare their reports and things like that. So they will have access to that account and that account only, but just so you're aware that, you know, it's going to be the three signers, but that company will have access to that that one account.
But all disbursements are still going to
I think I have legal questions on
Review and approve.
I have legal questions on that, how that works, so.
Okay.
Take it to executive session?
Do you need me to?
Please.
Yeah, well. Sorry, sorry. Stop, move to take the side of it to executive, because I was going to tell you to finish, I was going to finish my thought here and finish over here, like, okay, wait, stop.
Motion to take to executive session by Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Thank you.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. So we'll be taking items six and eight to executive session. Going on to executive session items, item number nine.
Mayor, if I may?
Did I take a vote? I didn't, right?
No, not yet. We have a
A motion, a motion second? You have a question?
Well, I I don't have a question, but I do, I I have something that I want to address to Mr. Antuna, that to me is important, not
But you can, is it related to this one, or not, so we can vote, and then you can?
No, 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 it's not in relation to
But let's vote since we have
So if there's no further discussion on item number eight, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Sorry, go ahead.
And it's nothing, you know, nothing out of this world, but it's just something that, and I know I can discuss this in executive session, but I don't like surprises, so I want to do it in open meeting, just so that, I mean, I know that we have a new mayor, I know that everyone has a different way of communicating and of, you know, letting us know, I know that, I think all of us are aware of how the mayor council used to do it, which is not the past, but I just want to remind you, Mr. Antuna, that that there's five of us here, okay? So anything that needs to be presented to us or ran through us, or just sometimes for just to notify us, you know, I just want to remind you that you are responsible for letting us know that. I don't like surprises, and I know that you don't either, okay? I don't think anybody does, you know? So just a reminder that we need notification of anything that's going to happen, okay? That we need to know of. I know there's decisions that the mayor would have to do on his own, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't have a problem with anybody's style of leadership, I don't have a problem with that either, but, you know, it is a reminder that it's your responsibility to make us aware of anything that we need to be aware of, you know, so.
Okay, no, for sure. I know I've tried in the past to do that.
Thank you, sir.
And I brought it to your attention, but definitely, if there's something that you feel that I I needed to tell you, for sure, let me know.
Please, no, sometimes there's things that, I mean, you're here all day, sometimes there's got to be things that you should know, I need to notify council of this, you know, because we trust that everything here is being conducted the way it should be. So if there's anything, please, that you feel, or that you have a doubt about or a question about, I mean, a text, you know, phone call, whatever, doesn't hurt, please, it's just a common courtesy, you know? That's the way I feel, I don't know if the rest of them feel that way, but for me, yes.
I think that's duly noted, and I know I've I've done it in the past, and and there's an item that we're talking about specifically, bring it to my attention, we'll discuss it, but for sure.
Please.
Duly noted.
Thank you, sir.
Duly noted, and just to give you some ease and comfort, everything that we discuss, I will advise Mr. Antuna to share with you all, because there's no decision that I'm going to make alone.
Right.
This is not the city of the mayor. It's a mayor council, and I know there's five of us, and we're all responsible for making that decision. So there will be no hidden agendas, everything's going to be transparent.
Thank you, sir.
And that's that's the way I run things, and that's the way they're going to be run. So I don't think you have to worry about that. If there is something that he fails to notify you of, it's not because of me, because it's in front of you all here, anything that we discuss, I expect the whole council to be aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that, thanks.
All right, going on to executive session, item number nine, executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of chapter five five one Texas Government Code. Code, consultation with attorney regarding Maverick County Fire Protection Emergency Medical Services Agreement and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. The record reflect, we'll be taking items number nine, number six, and number eight under section five five one point zero seven one of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding items six and eight, and we'll go to executive All right, let the record reflect that city council came out of executive session at six twenty PM, February thirteenth, twenty twenty. Going on to item number six, consideration and possible approval of a resolution authorizing the use of competitive sealed proposals for IT services. I believe the recommendation is.
Could you authorize a resolution?
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of a resolution designating the authorized city representatives for purposes of conducting and authorizing banking transactions as defined herein, and this is just to change the authorized signatures, the three signatures, the mayor, Imelda, and Jesse, right?
Correct.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, congratulations on your first motion. Seconded by Councilwoman Geralpando. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, going on to item number nine, executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding Maverick County Fire Protection Emergency Medical Services Agreement and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. I believe on this one, we're authorizing, the recommendation is going to be to authorize legal to submit and negotiate the final contract with the county, so, a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussions, anything that needs to be added, concerned? That was it. All those in favor, please raise your red hand. Unanimous. Final item on the agenda, adjournment, is anybody motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, seconded by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion?
I'm ready to go.
I know, they're waiting for me for another interview.
My kids are ready for me.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Meeting's adjourned. Have a great evening.